Well, good evening. I'm gonna call this Lacey City Council meeting to order. And can everyone, on November fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one amendment to tonight's agenda, which would be to add item three A, Student of the Month, under Public Recognitions and Presentations. Can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I move that we approve the amended agenda and consent agenda items.
Second. It's been moved and seconded?
Yep. Yes, I noticed on the significant disbursements, which I again really appreciate Director Wu for presenting. I was curious about the sixty-one thousand ninety-two item. If we could expound? I'm just curious about, I'm not questioning it, like.
Sure. I'm not sure the exact details of that, but that's typically a refund to, say, a development. It might have been an error on the calculation of, say, traffic mitigation or utility connection fees, but I'm not exactly sure what the specific details on that, but that's probably the case.
But that's generally, and we've seen those before.
Yes, yes, we have.
Especially at the end of the year, or is it, you know, irrelevant of that?
I don't think there's a particular time of year that's more common.
Okay.
You know, those calculations are complex and at times errors are made, but.
Generally on a large development like that?
Sure. Oftentimes, those development fees are quite high, so although sixty-one thousand is nothing to sneeze at, it's certainly, you know, within the normal range. Thank you. So, given that, there's been a motion and a second to approve tonight's amended agenda and consent agenda items. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. We have an amended agenda. First up is our Student of the Month, Public Recognition.
Hi, thank you for having us and for adding us to the agenda tonight. My name is Diana Cockerell. I'm with Gateway Rotary, and we've had the privilege of partnering with the North Thurston School District to create a Service Above Self Student of the Month Award. Students can be nominated by those they volunteer with or their peers, and one student a month from the North Thurston High Schools will receive award for demonstrating service above self, one of the Rotary values. I have to tell you, Jeannie Domingo and North Thurston School Districts have been phenomenal to partner with on this project and pull the pieces together to make it happen, so thank you. Balin Ratliff is our first Service Above Self Student of the Month. It's been a pleasure to get to learn about the work he's doing. Jeannie's gonna tell you more about what that work is.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jeannie Domingo. I am the Volunteer Specialist for North Thurston Public Schools, and I have had the honor to read all of the nominations for Student of the Month that comes in and sending them out to our committee. And when I first read Balin's, I was very, very impressed, and I had my fingers crossed. I know I shouldn't say that and be biased, but I will say we had a committee of six. Five out of the six chose Balin as the Student of the Month for October. Balin is a sophomore at River Ridge High School, and he has already volunteered over a hundred and thirty hours with Puget Sound Estuaryum. He is the youngest certified natural, let me make sure, beach naturalist. Let me make sure I get that right. He does guide interpretations. He helps the other adult volunteers with just kind of all kinds of stuff. He goes out and does beach outreach programs, ocean acidification, Shark Week, things like that. And then I just talked to his mom yesterday, and we found out that Balin was put in for a scholarship with UC Davis, and he won. So, he won. Yay! So, his work with the Estuaryum got him a scholarship to attend a free college course next summer through UC Davis, so we're very, very proud of him, and that's because of the work that he's done with the Estuaryum. And some of his peers, and adult peers, have said that one day they believe that Balin will be the next president of the Estuaryum. So, we were very impressed, the committee was very impressed, with all the work that he does, and we see him doing many more great things for our community. So, with that being said, we would like to award Balin Ratliff with our Student of the Month for October two thousand and eighteen. And that's all we have.
And if he could come here, we'll shake his hand.
Oh, absolutely.
So, we, as this council knows, we just added this to our agenda, our item tonight, and this is the first time they're doing the Student of the Month. This is something that we're hoping to do on an ongoing basis, but what we're sort of thinking about going forward, instead of doing it every month, we do it on a, we recognize them on a quarterly basis. And so, we could do it, so for November, December, then in January, recognize the two. For November, December, then every three months, we'll do it, you know, quarterly after that. So, there'll be January, February, March, and we'll do it in April, and go on that going forward. Great. Does that sound, sound good?
It sounds also fitting that the inaugural winner was, you know, showcased, you know, independently. I believe they do have some flyers too in the back, so if anybody want to.
Great. Thank you, and congratulations again. So, next up is public comments not on the agenda, and we do have a few people who've signed up. The first person is Ed Poole. Can you please come up and give your full name and keep your comments about three minutes?
My name is Ed Poole. I'm resident of Lacey out at Horizon Point. I'd like to talk about the recent unexpected results in the Proposition One on the recent election. I really don't have any formal presentation to make, and actually, the result was not only unexpected, I'm sure, on the pro side, but also on the against side, which I was involved in. The, I would like to make some suggestions how to approach the result, which was to turn down the Metropolitan Park District. It seems clear to me that the population is not particularly interested in large projects of built-for-special-use. They're more interested in family parks, informal use, and free play. I would, I know that this was an unexpected result for you, and I would like to offer that I would be glad to help with input and my viewpoints to the Parks Commission and to the City Council, so that you can buy, so that you can implement the will of the people to implement a different park philosophy than was proposed in the last election.
Okay. Thank you, and I appreciate that. We obviously have some work to do before we go back out, and we look forward to engaging the public and coming out with a parks proposal that everyone can support. And so, thank you for that, Ed. Appreciate it. Next up is Lisa.
Hi, my name is Lisa Gelati, and I'm welcome. Thank you for having me, Mayor Ryder, and council members. I want to just introduce myself, tell you a little bit about what I'm doing. Earlier this year, I founded a nonprofit called Build a Bus Home, and with the intention of helping with the low-income housing here in Lacey, Thurston County. And what we found is that what is more urgent right now is a mobile infrastructure for hygiene. So, we're working on two buses right now that are completely gutted and ready to start our next phase and go into the planning and implementation of the design. So, the buses are in great shape. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. And the, so basically, we need your help, volunteers, board members, supplies, and of course, money. Everyone needs money, and we're building community, first of all. So, I invite people that are interested in helping with this cause to talk to me afterwards or pick up a flyer. I'll leave some in the back. And I invite you to read more at buildabushome.com, or sorry, dot org, either one will work, and cleanupbus.com. And I just want to tell you that we're very excited to partner with as many organizations and people and city councils and governments as possible, so that we can bring the most needed hygiene to where it's, where the populations are. And we'll utilize faith communities, parking lots, and water supply from them as well. Working with a few people on that, so any input you have, also welcome. So, appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Lisa, and keep up the great work. We really appreciate it. So, that's buildabushome.org for those people. So, next up is Terry Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have any type of prepared statement. I understand this is a public comment, not a Q and A. But one thing I want to address with the Lacey City Council is, I've been a Lacey resident for twenty-five years. I live in Meridian Campus area, and I want to address the ongoing homeless problem and open drug use problem. Where I live right now, there is a homeless encampment about two miles from my house. It's only about a mile from Salish Middle School. And it's my understanding, because they are on private property, there's nothing that can be done by the city police or City of Lacey. Now, knowing that the City of Lacey council members work directly with the Lacey Police Department, I'm asking that this be dealt with more with a firm hand and not continue to enable a complete society. I think if anybody's been downtown Olympia, it's in shambles right now, and we cannot let that happen to the City of Lacey. I moved to Lacey, like I said, twenty-five years ago for a reason. I want to continue to live here. My kids are nearly grown, but there are certainly more small children around now than when I first moved here. It's an embarrassment to the community. My father, he's visiting from Arizona right now, and he was shocked driving through downtown Olympia. He was shocked what he saw driving through Meridian Campus right on the main drive. I spoke to the police officer who happened to be pulled over there just yesterday, and he was the one who told me, you know, run this up the flagpole and directly to the city council, specifically you, Andy, because you deal with the police chief. So, I'm asking that this be dealt with firmly, because these people are not moving. They're moving from the private property literally up to the sidewalk, which is now city property, and my homeowners association dues help maintain that property. I've already contacted my homeowners association, not sure what that's gonna do, but nonetheless, I know there's a process for everything. So, I'm asking that this be dealt with firmly, not enabling people. They've got to get out of our community. I personally don't care where they go. I'm not a very sympathetic or empathetic person when it comes to this type of thing. It's not fair to the community. These people aren't contributing anything. All they're doing is taking and damaging.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. I'm not sure where this is located, if it's on private property.
It's at the intersection of Llamas and Morales.
Chief?
So, Chief, maybe you can respond to that one, because we've dealt with that recently.
We are, I have an officer that is working specifically that area. He's been dealing with the property owners. We posted trespassing signs. The property owner in that area you're talking about just spent fifteen thousand dollars to remove all the trash and all the things that you were discussing. Those items that are on the sidewalk, there's also, these folks have rights, and any personal property they have to keep until these people either come back and get it or a period of time passes. So, we're actively working that area. I understand your concern. I really do. There's a balance, you know? We're dealing with people in crisis, and we're also having to, we're displacing them, and we have to put them somewhere else. So, it's a very difficult issue, and it, it's gonna get even more difficult. But I have an officer that's specifically working that area, and he's doing, he's doing a great job. He's contacting the people, and a lot of them are leaving voluntarily, but the property owners are cleaning up. Like I said, they spent fifteen thousand dollars to just clean that whole area out.
Great. Thank you for the update there, Chief. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council on any items on the agenda, please? Please state your full name and keep your comments about three minutes.
My name is Tyler Burbidge. I'm here with Lisa on behalf of the Build a Bus Home organization. I'm a resident of Tumwater, but I go to the University of Washington in Tacoma, and I'm in the Urban Studies program and have done a lot of coursework revolving around homelessness issues in the region, in the Puget Sound region, and more specifically in Tacoma. Spent time last quarter doing a lot of research on solutions to the issue and the crises that we see. And so, I thought that it'd be a great idea to get involved here in Olympia, Lacey, and Tumwater to help resolve these issues that we do see and that are prevalent in our communities. I'm excited to get involved here, and just want to put another plug for the Build a Bus, buildabushome.org. And Lisa's been great to work with, and I look forward to working with her in the future from here on out. I would encourage you to get involved as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on any items not on the agenda? Please, sir. State your full name and keep your comments about three minutes.
Yes, my name is Mitchell Potter, and I don't have anything, like, formally put together, but I'd like to talk about an issue that is near my home. On the corner of Husky and School, literally, that's the street name, there's a bus stop there, and there's a lot of children there, so, and like, at six-thirty in the morning, it's dark, and there's not a lot of streetlights out there, and nor is there sidewalks. So, I'm concerned that, you know, one of those children are gonna get hit by a car, because sometimes people drive through there and they're not paying attention. And I think the light would make it safer in that area. Also, a few blocks from there, there's housing that is lower-income housing, and I've noticed occasionally there's individuals that, you know, I don't know if you'd want them around your children. I've tried to say this as, you know, nice as I can. And I feel like if we had the light there, at least, you know, it'd be more visibility and make the area safer. And I don't know how to, you know, formally petition or anything like that, and this was just something that I would like to.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So, I thought, I'm like Husky and School, that's near Tanglewild, right?
Yes.
So, that's, believe it or not, I know people get this confused all the time. That's in our urban growth area, but that's in, currently in the county, and we do not have jurisdiction over that at the moment. It's something this council's been talking about for a long time, annexing that area into the city, and it will happen someday. We're just not there yet. And so, and one of the reasons why we have annexed, because there's a lot of areas that do not have sidewalks and are not to Lacey's, City of Lacey standards, and so there's gonna be a big expense to do that. And so, it takes ongoing conversations with the county. I would suggest that you will need to reach out to Thurston County. I think they meet on Tuesdays.
Tuesdays at what, two o'clock?
Tuesdays, two o'clock, and pass along your concerns to them, and we can maybe forward it on as well and say, hey, we, there's this, there's an issue there. Our city manager's giving you his card. Want to say a few words, Scott?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if we have your contact information, the signup sheet, we can give you a contact. Probably the county engineer would be a one opportunity to contact or reach out to them, and then start that dialogue.
Okay. So, if you could, if you would like, you could fill this out, and if you just go sit on the back there, your name and your phone contact information, and we'll get back in touch with you.
All right.
I really appreciate you coming and giving us a heads up, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, we get that all the time. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on any items on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
For me?
Yep, please.
Fantastic public comment period. Thank you all for coming. It's really helpful to see, to hear about these things that we, you all, we all can't see there in your neighborhood, and we just really appreciate you taking the time and leadership to come here and present it. I've seen, over the years, several solutions solved that were unknown by such an interaction. I'd encourage you, if you haven't, and to those that are gonna be commenting in the future, to write it down in a letter form as well and submit that. That way, it's easier for us and staff to process. And we do. We really listen to these comments, and we, so we really appreciate it. The second thing I wanted to mention, Mr. Mayor, you asked for some feedback real quick, but I didn't really respond, but to give that feedback on the Student of the Month, to me, it seems like they should have one each month for the Student of the Month. It would be more impactful, and we'd be able to focus on that student. It would take the same net time. It might be, I don't know where the quarterly thing's coming from, maybe it's admin for the school or something, but.
I was just trying to make it a little more efficient, but why don't we, our next work session, let's, let's talk about this a little bit more at that time. Thank you for your feedback.
But great to have them, though. That's fantastic addition to the agenda.
Yeah.
We've had a lot of discussion with youth representation, their boards and committees.
I know this council will support it. Just, under what format, we, let's, we'll discuss, and we'll come up with a great.
Probably not student of the day, though. Probably not.
So, let's see. Next on our agenda, I'm gonna open up the first public hearing on the two thousand and nineteen budget. Turn it over to Troy.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. Good evening, members of the council. Tonight is your first hearing on the budget. You will be conducting two public hearings on the budget. The next one is scheduled for December sixth, and you are scheduled to adopt the budget on December twentieth. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to accept any public comment on the budget, and for you, the city council will provide any guidance to staff as to any changes you'd like to see within the budget. I would like to provide some background on the budget. You've seen a lot of this already, but it'd be good for the public as well. So, here is your total two thousand and nineteen proposed budget. I will note that we did make a change to the budget in the property tax area. We did discuss this at the public hearing on revenues. So, we've added about fifty-eight thousand dollars to the budget that was printed and the budget that is available on the city's website. But overall, your total proposed budget for nine, two thousand and nineteen is one hundred and forty-two point one million. This is about a eight-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar decrease. And what you have here is the total proposed budget, basically in subcategories of the total budget. I will provide more specific comments on the general fund and slides that are coming up, but you are seeing about a seven-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-dollar increase to the general fund. Your capital projects is actually going down about two-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand. What's in here primarily is buildings and arterial streets. Really, the difference here is within your building fund. We did budget five-hundred-thousand dollars for our response to the RFP for the Veterans Affairs Outstation. So, that's the primary difference in the building budget for next year. And you do have a decrease in arterial streets because of the completion of Hogan Bay Road. But you do have your Super T project. That is the overlay project for two thousand and nineteen. That's about a six-million-dollar project within the capital project funds. Your special funds are, that's primarily your lodging tax budget. Also in here is your Hicks Lake Management District. The lodging tax is, has about a ninety-four-thousand-dollar increase to it. Your geo-debt funds, not a lot of change here. This is really just the annual debt payments the city is scheduled to make. About half of your budget is within utilities, so water, wastewater, stormwater, reclaimed water. Pretty significant changes here, especially in terms of capital. So, your water capital budget is actually roughly the same in terms of dollars, but you do have a major project next year in the Mullen Road Water Maintenance in conjunction with the county's roundabout project. The water M and O budget is increasing about seven-hundred-thousand dollars. A number of reasons why you're seeing an increase there. We have two new positions for a new flushing crew within water. We haven't had, we haven't added staff to the maintenance of our water system in a number of years. We also have an increase to excise taxes, just because water revenues are going up, and then the taxes owed to both the city and the state are going up by that amount. You have some miscellaneous increases, such as the equipment rental fund charges. Also, some service and maintenance contracts are going up as well. And you also have a larger transfer to the utility capital fund from the water maintenance fund. That's about a two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar increase. More significant changes in your wastewater utility. You have a capital decrease of about two-point-four million. This is primarily due to the lower budget for the lift station two rehab, as well as lift station nine corrosion is pretty much complete in two thousand and eighteen. The wastewater M and O portion of this budget is going up about six-hundred-thousand. We do have a new position for the step program. You have about a three-hundred-thousand-dollar increase due to the lot rate increase, and we have some miscellaneous lift station maintenance increases, as well as odor control increases. Your stormwater budget is going up about two-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand. We do have a decrease to capital and stormwater as well. The completion of the Thirty-third Court Stormwater is within that decrease. And you do have an increase on the M and O side, primarily due to the capital transfer to fund capital projects within stormwater. And then your final category here is displayed as your internal service funds. This is the equipment rental fund. This is the fleet, the vehicles for the city, as well as the computer systems, the network systems. The equipment rental fund is going down about a half a million dollars. This is primarily due to a lower capital replacement budget within this fund. You do have a new position proposed within equipment rental. That's a mechanic position. Your information services is decreasing about a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand. Similar to the equipment rental fund, we have less capital replacements being budgeted for two thousand and nineteen. This is the same information in graph form. Sometimes it's easier to see this in pie chart form. Again, total budget, one hundred and forty-two point one million. Just a little bit less than half of your two thousand and nineteen budget is in your utility funds. It's right around forty-nine percent, sixty-nine point two million dollars. As, you know, I discussed in the previous slide, you know, a lot of capital improvement program within the utilities. It's about twenty-six point three million altogether, proposed for two thousand and nineteen. This is about forty percent of the utility fund budget. Looking at the total city budget, it's about nineteen percent of the budget, so definitely a significant portion. Happy to report that we're investing in our infrastructure. We're, we're expanding it as well as preserving it, so that's certainly a good thing. Lot is also a significant portion of the utility budget, about eleven point three million. That's about sixteen percent of the utility budgets. And as I said, I'll have more specific comments about the general fund, but it's coming at forty-nine point five million. I would like to highlight the capital projects at sixteen million there in the yellow slice of the pie. Again, this is an indication that the city is continuing to invest. Again, this is an indication that the city is continuing to invest in its infrastructure, both in terms of expansion as well as preservation. So, uh, we should feel fortunate that we're able to do that. So let's talk specifically about the general fund. Uh, the general fund is the, uh, budget that provides for the services that citizens most identify with. This is your law enforcement, transportation, parks and rec, engineering, community and economic development as well as, uh, as well as administrative services. So again, this is, I think, the, the area of the budget that the citizens are probably most familiar with. So looking at the, uh, general fund budget again, we've summarized this into, uh, major areas. Again, it's about forty-nine point five million. This is an increase of about seven hundred and eighty-three thousand. Uh, I'd like to comment on some of the more significant variances. Um, administration is showing a three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar increase. So administration is the city council budget, uh, public affairs, human resources and city manager. Um, within this budget, we have, uh, we've expanded the neighborhood grant program. So that was an increase of about twenty-five thousand dollars. We also have budget in there for the mayor's gala for two thousand nineteen. There is a fifty thousand dollar budget for a new, uh, intern program within the city manager budget. Uh, we are continuing to fund the EDC scale-up program within this budget. And there's also a new position within this budget, an, an emergency management specialist. And this is really to, um, help us be more prepared in, in the event of an emergency as well as, uh, meet state and federal regulations in terms of, uh, emergency management. Uh, the next area I'd like to highlight is the police budget. It's budgeted at about five hundred and forty thousand higher than the eighteen, two thousand eighteen budget. We do have two new police officers within this budget. Um, we also have a, a sixty-eight thousand dollar study for the police station. Uh, we know that the police station is, it's been a while since we've looked at it. I think we've outgrown it, so this is really an assessment as to what this police station will look like in the future. Uh, it'll make recommendations as to the needs, uh, to, uh, for the police station. Uh, there's also an increase to equipment rental fees. Um, we're, uh, seeing police cars, we've replaced them with, uh, the Crown Vics are no longer made by Ford and we're using, uh, we're, uh, a new interceptor. And it's, it's a little bit more expensive than the, the, the Crown Vics, so that's the primary reason we're seeing an increase to criminal charges. We also have some overtime and, within this budget to, um, address some of our, our, our issues at, uh, Long Lake Park. So again, overtime, uh, budget's going up within here. Uh, public works, um, we're showing a one hundred and, or a three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar increase. And there's two new positions within this budget, of one of which is a civil engineer that will help us with, um, our facility projects. Um, so some of our building projects, major building, building repairs. Um, our, our civil engineering division, our design division has really been focused on utilities and just doesn't have that capacity to get to other city projects. So in order to accomplish that, we're proposing a new civil engineer. We also have a position within our parks maintenance division, uh, to really handle our irrigation system. We have quite a complex irrigation system within our, our park system. So that is the primary reasons for the increase in public works. I'd also like to highlight, uh, the city's street budget, six hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar increase over two thousand eighteen. Um, we also have two new positions within this, uh, budget, uh, to journey level maintenance techs. Uh, this is also an area that we have not added staff in, in quite a while and we have just a growing and larger infrastructure to, to maintain. So two positions there. Um, we also have about four hundred thousand dollars, uh, for capital, um, within this budget. We have a new dump truck as well as, uh, more equipment for snow and ice control. And we also have a new, uh, new equipment for sidewalk maintenance program. I will note that this, uh, budget is going down fifty thousand dollars due to the, uh, LED, uh, streetlight replacement. So, um, you might remember that we have a ten-year program to replace all our city's streetlights with LED lighting. I think many of us have noticed how much more brighter some of those lights are, but it also uses a lot less electricity. So again, about a fifty thousand dollar decrease to the electricity bill within our street fund. So I do wanna talk about workforce considerations. You know, really when you look at this budget, it is, it's more of a maintenance budget. Um, we are, uh, really looking at maintaining our infrastructure, maintaining the service levels that our citizens have come to expect from Lacy. Um, we survived the, the great recession and the slow recovery, but at the same time, we didn't add staff during that period. So, um, really this is just a catch-up on a lot of the maintenance that's been really difficult to get to. So, uh, the budget does include eleven new positions. Uh, seven of which are in the general fund and, uh, the remainder in utilities and our equipment rental fund. I will note that we did have seventeen requests for new positions from our directors and city staff. And we weren't able to meet all the needs, but I think we're addressing the most critical with this budget. So within your general fund budget, again, seven new positions. Uh, the emergency management specialist, which I mentioned earlier, two new police officers, civil engineer for capital facilities projects. Uh, the parks maintenance position and the two, uh, journey level technicians for, uh, your street maintenance. Um, within your utilities, we have three new positions proposed, um, all of which are journey level maintenance technicians. We have, uh, two for a new flushing crew within our water division and one within our wastewater, uh, division for our step program. This is a septic tank, um, effluent pump, uh, program. And then the final position is a, an equipment mechanic, uh, within our equipment rental division. Same, same story here, we just have more and more infrastructure that needs to be taken care of, or in this case, equipment. Um, that will just really help us maintain the service levels that, um, we'd like to provide. Um, we did conduct our revenue hearing two weeks ago, um, but I do want to, um, you know, highlight, uh, the general fund revenue sources. Um, again, like the experiential budget, we have a balanced budget, so we have about a seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar increase. And you could see pretty much across the board, we're showing increases. The economy is, has been good the last couple of years, which has really been, uh, uh, seen. And it's, it's been a much easier effort to balance the budget the last, uh, two years, if not three years. Um, but like I said, across the board, we're seeing increased revenues. Um, your all other category, the bottom category there is showing a one point three million dollar decrease. Um, this isn't an indication of, uh, the economy slowing down or anything like that. This is really more because we have a lower capital program in two thousand nineteen. So you're seeing less beginning cash being used, which is a revenue source, one-time revenue source. And you're not seeing the inter-fund transfers to fund those, uh, capital projects. So again, not an indication of any sort of slowdown in the Lacy economy. And again, I'd like to show this in a couple of different ways. Here's a, a pie chart of the same information. Um, I always like to state that about fifty-seven percent of our budget comes from, uh, general taxes. Uh, twenty-one percent, uh, coming in the form of service fees or, uh, other fees. Uh, that's really just a reflection of that's the percentage that we're actually recovering for direct services and the rest is coming from taxes and, and shared revenue. I do wanna talk about our, our six-year financial plan. Uh, the good news is we don't have to use any of those, uh, action items that have been identified by the council. But I do wanna remind the council that, um, if or when the economy takes a downturn, you do have some identified, uh, programs that we can use to address those downturns. And throughout that process, the, the council really identified three major areas of financial flexibility. So one is the use of reserves. Uh, the second is expenditure and, and service level. So taking a look at, um, you know, what we are providing to the public is, and then the final is, is revenue enhancements. So I, I really wanted to just kind of point out the specific action items. Um, we'll talk about reserves first. So all of the reserves that the council identified through, I'm sorry, uh, all the, the reserves that the council identified and established through the development of the six-year plan are, are still intact for two thousand nineteen. We have a, uh, pension revenue reserve of over nine hundred thousand. Uh, we have a budget policy reserve. This is a, a reserve that could help us bridge, uh, what we think will be temporary, uh, downturns in economy or maybe a bridge to, uh, further actions and maybe longer to react. Uh, so you have two million dollars for that. And then you have a strategic, uh, economic, uh, development investment, a reserve of, of just over one point six million. You'll probably remember this reserve was originally established at about two point five million. The two thousand eighteen budget used about nine hundred and ten thousand dollars of this reserve for, um, three different, uh, action items for economic development. The council's also made it very clear, this is a, a number one priority. Um, we will look to replenish this budget, uh, through, um, uh, unencumbered reserves. Um, and we don't think that will be an issue to get right back up to your two point five million dollar target. Uh, the next area is, is, uh, expenditures and service levels. We do have two line items within the capital, uh, budget of the general fund. Um, that this is, these two line items here have really helped fund one-time projects. This is also, uh, line items that we use for unforeseen, um, issues that arise. For example, this year, we've been having some issues with the police station in terms of roof leaks and, and whatnot. So we've been using, uh, these line items for those unexpected things. But again, this is also funding future one-time projects. And then the final area is revenue enhancements. Um, you do have, uh, three that you identified. Two are indirect cost charges, uh, two, uh, utility funds. Um, we, we've already implemented the indirect cost, uh, uh, rates to the water fund. But really what this does is it, it, it takes revenue or, um, services that are provided by the general fund and charging the utilities. So think of all your overhead, your administrative, uh, uh, benefits that the general fund provides to utilities. That's really what that is recovering. And then, uh, you know, potentially a, a cable TV utility tax. Um, so that really covers your, your action items that you developed. But again, uh, because of the, the, the improved economy, um, certainly no need to use any of these action plans for two thousand nineteen. Um, I do wanna highlight the changes to the budget because the, uh, printed document does not reflect those. Again, has to do with the, uh, areas of the property tax. We have the property tax refund levy that, uh, we were notified by the county treasurer after the printing of the budget. And then we had an adjustment to, uh, new construction, which was an increase of another three thousand dollars. So in summary, your two thousand eighteen budget really maintains the service levels that the citizens have come to expect. We're going to continue to protect the public. We're going to provide those, uh, uh, you know, maintenance for infrastructure, uh, and those other services that make, really make this a great place to live. So, uh, we should be, whoops, we should feel pretty fortunate that we are continuing to do that. So with that, I'll take any questions. Again, the purpose of tonight's hearing is to take any public comments, if any, and then to receive any direction from you, the council, as to any changes you'd like to see to your proposed budget.
So first off, uh, this is a public hearing and, uh, we didn't have anyone sign up to address this council on, on our budget. But now's the chance, if anyone wants to come up and comment on our proposed two thousand nineteen budget, now's the time. Seeing none, um, I do have a, a couple of questions. Um, my, my first question is, uh, I, I don't remember what the, what the two thousand seventeen total budget was. Do you know off the top of your head, approximately? I guess what my, my question is, is how much of the two thousand seventeen budget did we actually spend? So what, what was the carryover from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen?
Uh, the seventeen, I'm really like going off the top of my head. So we probably spent about ninety-five percent of the budget, um, you know, give or take a couple of percentage points.
So that carryover would be what?
It was probably in the one point five to, to two million range. Majority of that coming from sales tax. Uh, you know, as you know, the last three years of, of, we've seen, uh, improvement there. Um, as well as, uh, building permit revenues. So development is, is really picked up in the last few years as well.
And then what about for the, this two thousand eighteen budget? The, how much of the forty-eight million do you think we're gonna spend? So how much do you think we'll be able to carry over to two thousand?
I would guess it's going to be, uh, very similar, uh, at year end as, as seventeen. So it could be as high as two million. As you know, the sales tax is about one point two million higher, um, year-to-date. And we're, you know, obviously we have a couple more months to go in the year, so, um, you know, probably that same range, one point five to two million in terms of, um, exceeding our expectations in terms of, of revenue.
Okay. Councilman?
I'm gonna test your memory banks too, uh, um, in regards to the gambling tax, uh, six percent of the D and O and gambling tax of our general budget. Years back, we staged down, um, the percentage of, uh, gambling tax. And I, I wanna say, the, before we implemented that, we, we got four and a half, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand, I believe. What, what, um, was the income this year? Was that exceeded that, even though it's a lower percentage that we're taxing?
Uh, no, it's, it's, it's come down, so a little bit of history there with the, the, the rate used to be ten percent and then the council.
Staged down to seven, right?
Lowered it down to seven and a half and phased it in over a three-year period. So, um, looking back five years, so back to two thousand thirteen, we collected four hundred and twenty-six thousand. Uh, the last year we have full year results was two thousand seventeen and we collected about three hundred and ten thousand. So it's, it's really reflective of that two point five percent reduction.
It's probably still a better number than zero, 'cause it probably would've either moved or closed.
Yeah, and we are, we are projecting a slight increase for, for two thousand nineteen. Um, you know, it's really dependent on volume at, at this point, since the rate is, is no longer changing.
I was just curious to see how that affected the, you know, the three percent stage down and where we're at now.
So is there any other questions from this council, councilman?
So question and then a couple of comments. The, the, um, it's good that we didn't have to, um, uh, deal with the reserves. But the percentage of total reserves compared to the total budget seems like a low percentage to me overall. It just, it strikes me as if we were to go into some major problems, there's, doesn't seem like a lot, a lot of dollars to dip into.
Sure, well, I, I certainly share that, that sentiment, but, uh, that's only a small portion of our reserves really.
Okay.
Um, we're, we're in probably an envious position, I would say, in terms of comparison to other cities. Those are just the reserves of the year, if not every, every year in terms of identifying projects and, and council initiatives that, uh, you see in the future. Um, so you, you do have bud, you do have reserves for, um, building replacement, equipment replacement, um, future, uh, economic development, that sort of thing. So, um, again, let me put your mind at ease, we're, we have healthy reserves.
Who would you say are percentages ballpark?
Well, by policy, you have a two-month operating reserve in every single one of your funds. So you're meet your works, we're meeting that expectation.
So twenty percent?
It's probably in the fifty percent range, depending on the fund. So, um, we really look at our funds, um, individually. So some of your capital project funds, for example, um, we've identified, you know, large projects out in the future. So, you know, those will, you know, be higher than that sixteen and twenty percent range that's actually suggested by, by many folks and associations. So, um, again, we're in good shape.
Thank you for clarifying that, I feel much, much better. So, um, my two comments are, uh, first, the capital requests, uh, is a relatively, uh, conservative request. Uh, given their, uh, the recession's over and we're seeing things better. And so that's one, uh, that's another indicator that Lacy continues to be fiscally conservative. And I think that should be brought out. Um, also, you noted that there were seventeen requests for staff, uh, which is, uh, catch-up from the recession. And I remember the, the hard, uh, workload that staff took on during the recession. Um, but only, uh, eleven were, um, doled out. Also another indicator that Lacy continues to be fiscally conservative, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I have, uh, just a couple of comments, uh, um, after having some conversations with our city manager and something that we sort of missed in our, our budget workshop up to now. Um, one, one budget item that I think we need to account for and that we need some council consensus on is, um, our youth council. Uh, this is, uh, something that this council's been talking about for quite a long time, about, uh, having a youth council. Um, what we've been waiting on is for, uh, for us to have the staff to be able to do that. Um, now we have that staff, who's under the assistant to the city manager, who's gonna be doing a lot of this work. And so, um, my question was, uh, to our city manager is what's the next step? And so my question was to our city manager is what's the next step on creating the youth council and moving forward with that? And he said we need another head shake from this council on going forward. There's gonna be a small budget impact. You suggested around five thousand dollars or so for next year, and so that is something I would like the council to consider and have your affirmation on, so we can, after, I think, talking about this for seven years, we can finally move forward with having our youth council to go forward. We're just been working, talking about what it looks like and what their role's gonna be. It's gonna be a sort of a combination between civics and also an advisory panel, so it's sort of a dual, dual role there.
So this would be in addition, I assume, to the youth counselors that we have on several of our committees already, right?
Yes, so we'd pull, we'd, my, the idea is, is we'd pull a representative from the parks, the historic commission, the library board, and then we'd have representatives from each of the high schools in town, including the private schools. We'd reach out to them, and there's a lot of good information out there. We also, we have a youth council that's on the parks, that, maybe Jen, you wanna talk a little bit about what you currently do? And so we're gonna try to pull this all together into one council. Jen?
Yeah, so the teen council that's under the parks department is more like a volunteer group, so it doesn't work as an actual city council. So it might be something that we decide if this moves forward to rename, so that there's no confusion.
Yeah.
Or we could talk about how to mix the two, but I'm not sure it's the same thing.
No, it's not. It's not. The teen council, they're a little bit different. This will be an actual board, sort of council. Lenny?
Yeah, just clarification. So you were saying we would pull the person that's on, the youth count, that are on the others?
Also be a representative.
Would come to this, they wouldn't be on that?
No, they would be on both.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so they can report out.
I didn't wanna lose that.
No, no, they would report out on what's going on in parks, what's going on in the library, what's going on in historic commission.
Yeah, I think that's, that sounds great. I just didn't wanna lose
No.
That youth perspective on those boards.
Nope, I agree.
So, yes, we have been talking about-
Can you turn on your mic?
Yes, I just thought it seemed weird. One of the, I think, advantages, one is they get credit from their school, but the other thing is we do have that major gap of not hearing from our younger residents about what they expect or could use from us. Not that we can use all of their ideas, but it really helps balance perspective. But also, I would really hope that we don't just identify students that are the cream of the crop, because we want to have the full range of student participation, in my opinion, that you get people that, that have a different perspective rather than this, I'm going to college, so this is why I'm on this committee kind of a thing. I think it would be helpful to have others as well represented.
So Jacob's actually done a lot of work on this already. He's looked at it, he's come up with different examples from different cities. We're just really at the next step of trying to finalize that, and I just want to make sure the council's still on board, and there's gonna be a little bit of a budget impact, and so.
Got an idea with that.
Yeah, there's still some legwork to do, and we'll be updating you as, as it develops.
Just a quick comment. I mean, we saw the student of the month, you know, with the partnership between North Thirston Public Schools and Gateway Rotary. We have a lot of Rotarians on our council, and Gateway focuses on youth and students, and it brings it, like the deputy mayor said, brings a different perspective that a lot of us wouldn't, you know, normally be the first thing to think of. In any way, we can celebrate our youth and bring awareness to, because we have some bright minds at some very young ages, and they could be a very vital tool and, you know, bring a different perspective that we wouldn't normally approach.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I was sure we're gonna get counsel, I was on the same page with me, but we just need to make sure the city manager hears this in the, in the, in the public hearing. The other issue I want to bring up, and it's something I have brought up a couple times over the years, but it's our, the city council travel budget. We, a bunch of us just got back from a conference, and once again, a lot of us are finding ourselves where we haven't increased the council budget, travel budget for inflation over several years, and most of us who are involved are ended up having to pay out of our pocket. And so we'd, we'd at least like to see an increase for inflation over the past, since we've, since we've adjusted last ones, the last time that was adjusted?
I believe we established the travel budget probably three years ago, and it was two thousand dollars per council member. There's an additional stipend for if we do an advocacy at the DC.
But what we're finding out is that two thousand dollar budget doesn't, barely cover one of our meetings, and so, you know, I would like to see an increase in that travel budget to reflect what the, you know, closer to what the actual costs are for it. But I'll, I'll open this up to the rest of the council on your opinions on this.
Unfortunately, I have to say I'm opposed to any increase. I'm really not for much of a travel budget. I think that the council should focus on Lacey. I don't appreciate and respect the national meetings and whatnot, I'm sorry. I think there's a place for some, and we do have a travel budget for it, so I'll just say it upfront, and I won't make it a huge issue, but I can't support it for that.
That's fine. Councilman?
I would say it's very important to have larger organizations, especially lobbying for what we're trying to, you know, revenue and things, we're trying to make Lacey as a better community. But I also have a comment going back to the youth council, so when this discussion finishes, I wanted to mention that.
Councilman? Yeah, Lenny?
I was just wondering what you were pointing at.
Yeah.
So I think this probably warrants further discussion, probably at a work session, because I think that we need to get into more detail on it. I believe that the last time that we discussed this, didn't we allow for those who weren't using their budget for the rest of the council to be able to use that budget? Is that, as I recall?
So, one of the things that we've found with that, you, it's, you get reimbursed at the, in the year, and so, so council members have to carry that cost all the way out, and then you get reimbursed at the very end of the year. If there's some way to change that, where we can, if there's money, you know, I'd be, I'd be more than happy to discuss this more in a work session. I just, like, once again, I'm realizing, you know, there's, as you know, I'm on the board of directors for National League of Cities, and if you look at what the city has got now, that with the help with our Lacey Veterans Services Hub, and there's, they're our main lobbying effort back, back in DC, there's been a lot of great things that we've bought and backed for the city, the city of Lacey that's taken, been-
And that's part of why I think it should go to a work session, have further discussion, because I think we need to hear more about that, because I, I don't, I don't know that I can directly point at many things that we've gotten that have helped the people of Lacey come from the travel. And I've been to some of the conventions, some of them I think have been great. I've learned a lot. I'm not sure how that's benefited the people, so I'm not sure that we should send more of the people's money on it.
I'd love to talk to you about all the things that we brought. Right now, the Lacey has a prescription drug discount program, it's through NLC that's affecting a lot of members.
I'd love to know how many people are actually using it, because I've never heard a word about anyone using it.
We can get you some updated numbers on that.
Yeah, so I'm, again, that's just the kind of stuff I think we should probably bring to a work session.
Councilman?
So, I kind of agree, I think a work session might be in order, but do you have a placeholder number that we could talk about tonight, and then we could adopt an amendment to the budget at a later time?
You know, I was talking to the deputy mayor about this just a little bit ago. I'm not a hundred percent sure what that number is. I'd kind of like to see what the average cost is for a conference and go from that. I mean, some of it, it's difficult to figure out, because you have airfare and a hotel, and usually that's, your budget's gone there, you know, and so.
There are many classes.
And then classes and-
Yeah, and actually, I'm, I'm not counting in the travel thing about my classes particularly, although I learn a lot. It's going to the meetings, and, and I, I know that, for instance, my op-ed that I did for Lacey or the general of Thurston County actually was brought up at NLC and identified that my op-ed was written up and stuff. So, you know, it came back that Lacey has done issues on water infrastructure and stuff, so that's a good thing. But it's, you, when you're in a lot of committees, you, the amount of time to actually take classes gets tighter because you're in committees.
So let's, I have no problem, but let's, let's move this. When's our next work session we have available before the end of the year?
December thirteenth.
So I guess we'll have to be at the December thirteenth. We can talk a little bit more about that, and we can bring you some more information about, about that.
That'd be great.
Okay? Is there any, what's, do you have?
I wanted to comment on before with the, with the youth council. So that, this past election, there was an eighteen-year-old elected in Oregon.
That's right.
And, you know, he brought a two-year plan to get his town, a small town, back on track, and people thought it couldn't be done in ten years. And, you know, there's some bright minds out there, and, and, you know, sometimes they're discounted just because they're eighteen or nineteen or twenty, but, I mean, some of them bring some real solutions and, you know, can really open some eyes and get some stuff done.
I appreciate the comment. Councilman?
So I would just like to request, if we do end up with a budget surplus, that we consider earmarking at least some of that to address homelessness and affordable housing.
Yeah. Well, obviously, we-
That's a priority.
Okay, I think that's another thing we can talk about. We obviously are doing quite a bit in two thousand, next year, and I think the council is well, well aware of some of those programs.
I also wanted to bring in mind to the travel budget is, you know, with that travel budget being less for council members, it really restricts you to either the national or state level conference, and you can't do both, so it's kind of taken away, because you really get most things done locally, in my opinion, faster, and, I don't know, just something to consider.
Yeah, well, let's, I'm looking forward to the conversation we have in December.
Yeah, I'm on both boards, so I understand.
So I'm gonna close this, this public hearing on our two thousand nineteen budget, and then I'm gonna open up our public hearing on our Silicon Marvin annexation.
I'm gonna pass out some comments we did receive from Thurston County, so you have an opportunity to maybe look through those as I give my presentation. So the city has received a petition for annexation filed by Frank Evans, Ostrom Mushroom Company, North Thirston Public Schools, Fire District Three, and the city of Lacey, using the sixty percent petition method, which is RCW thirty-five A fourteen one twenty. The Thurston County Assessor's Office has reviewed the petition and verified that the signatures represent no less than sixty percent of the assessed valuation. Prior to approval of the annexation, a public hearing is required to be held by the city council, and that's the purpose of this hearing tonight. Procedurally, the annexation after the hearing is required to be sent to the Thurston County Boundary Review Board for their review. Once the hearing has been held, the Boundary Review Board process will begin. If the Boundary Review Board declines to assert jurisdiction, then the application returns to the council for final consideration in ordinance form. Staff is requesting the council approve a motion tonight to send this to the Boundary Review Board after the, at the conclusion of the hearing. So a little bit about the annexation area. The area shown on the map behind me here, go back a little bit. The area is generally located around the intersection of Stillcom Road and Marvin Road Southeast. It includes two hundred and fifty-nine point one acres and twelve separate tax parcels. The current assessed value of the, of the properties are just under forty million dollars. However, much of the assessed value is contained in government-owned property, and so would therefore be exempt from the payment of property taxes. The taxable assessed valuation for the area is just over ten million dollars. The boundary is proposed would connect to the current city limits to the south of the Mark Apartments, so you see on the map behind me here where that does connect to the current city limits. So this current city limits is in green to the north, so this would connect Mark Apartments, which are, I think the last phase is currently under construction, is right here, so it does connect down in. This is the intersection, Highway five-ten, which is Marvin Road, runs north and south through the annexation area, and Stillcom Road runs east and west. Here's an aerial photograph. The area proposed for annexation includes the existing Rainier Vista Mobile Home Park. The Mobile Home Park is here, as well as some property to the north that is a future development parcel. The Mobile Home Park is a hundred and fifty-one leased spaces over about forty acres. To the west of that is Ostrom's Mushroom Farm. They've been there longer than the city's been a city, so they've been there for a long time. Niskewal Middle School is located here in the future, or, excuse me, the, the former Bucknell Field to the north of that. On the south side of Stillcom Road is the Regional Athletic Complex owned by the city of Lacey, as well as Future Phases, so the Future Phase at the corner of Stillcom and Marvin, as well as the property the city owns across Marvin Road here, the Phase Three property. We also own another parcel on the east side of the annexation area. You'll see a water tower here, so that we have some water infrastructure in the area. As well, there's also Fire District Three, Station Thirty-four, within the, within the annexation area as well. Here's the zoning for the area. What you'll notice is that there's a lot of residential zoning in the area, even though some of the properties aren't used for residential use. So the Mobile Home Park and Future Phase is zone low-density three to six residential, but so is Ostrom's Mushroom Farm, so it's a non-conforming use, obviously, in that zone, as it's not a residential use. The city's properties across, and the rack properties are also, Phase Two property and Phase Three are residential, as well as the water tower property. Those are, the water tower property and the Phase Two property is zone low densities three to six. The Phase Three property is on a combination of moderate and high-density residential, and then the Fire District parcels are also zone low-density residential three to six. Couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention before opening up the public hearing. There's been some additional information provided in the staff report that we wanted to make you aware of since we last met regarding this annexation proposal back in August. And the first is related to police services. So the most significant change to services within the annexation area would be related to law enforcement, based on the additional demands that the police resources, on police resources that would result from annexation of the area. We did pull numbers from Thurston County Sheriff's Office that does serve the area right now, and approximately a thousand, what they call incidents, that's not including traffic stops, occurred both in two thousand sixteen and in two thousand seventeen. Of those calls, approximately two hundred were associated with the existing Mobile Home Park. So with annexation, police response will transition from Thurston County Sheriff's Office to the Lacey Police Department. Doing so will provide a more timely response to those in the area, and would benefit property owners as well as the visitors to the rack. Annexation may also necessitate expanding the School Resource Officer Program to Niskewal Middle School. Another thing to consider is future potential revenue in the area. Obviously, the city would benefit from the additional tax revenue associated with any property, sales, BNO taxes, those kinds of things. However, any revenue is anticipated to be minor in relation to the services provided. Since most of the property to be annexed is owned by a government entity, the only parcels providing tax benefit would be the Rainier Vista Mobile Home Park and Ostrom's, and that's primarily through property taxes. The full analysis of the annexation, we did complete an annexation report that was done as part of the Tanglewild Thompson Place report. That was the full analysis of this area. This is just a piece of that annexation, full annexation report. If the council decides, desires a more detailed cost analysis of the area, this could be However, because a majority of the properties are under public ownership, then the revenue generated by the annexation would be minimal. And then finally, a little bit about Fire District Station Thirty-four. Fire services are currently provided by Lacey Fire District Three out of Station Thirty-four, which is within the annexation area, as I mentioned. Fire District Three is currently in the land use application process at Thurston County to build a new Station Thirty-four. Go back to the aerial. On property that's located between their, oops, sorry, between their current facility and Stillcom Road, so this piece, this parcel right here has a land use application, a special use permit that's under review by Thurston County. It is anticipated that pending approval of the special use permit by Thurston County and with the pending annexation, that the building permits for the station will be issued by the city of Lacey, with construction of the station occurring in early twenty nineteen. So as I mentioned at the outset, procedurally, the next step is for the city council to conduct a public hearing to accept testimony on the proposed annexation and pass a motion requesting the annexation be forwarded to the Boundary Review Board here tonight. Once a public hearing has been held and the Boundary Review Board process has been concluded, the city council can take final action on the annexation through passage of an ordinance. And then the one thing before I turn it over to you for any questions, is we did receive one written comment, and that's from Thurston County, and that was provided to you at the outset, which has two concerns. One is regarding the not including the properties that we've discussed previously in these two subdivisions to the north to be included in the annexation area. And then another residential development, and I'm not, frankly, I'm not quite sure exactly- And then another residential development, and I'm not, frankly, I'm not quite sure exactly where that residential development is. Buport Drive southeast and Stillcombe, um, twenty-six duplex units, uh, some concerns about not including that, um, in this development.
Is that not the little, the notch there?
Yeah.
It is. Set eighth court. Right next to the Fire District.
So it would be this? Okay, so that's the other concern as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
Yeah. So, so Ryan, can you, can you talk a little bit about that? About the reason that we're not including those two, because obviously that does make it a much more
Square.
square, you know, boundary. Can you talk a little bit about why we're not including those?
Right, and we, we talked about it at the last meeting, uh, back in August as well. Um, we'll talk about these two developments here. First of all, um, you know, with the amount of assessed value that we would need so to get, in order to get sixty percent, uh, we would essentially have to go door-to-door to get people to sign the annexation petition to get enough, um, assessed value to be able to, to make it pencil out. Um, so at this point, you know, what we're anticipating is that, um, upon Boundary Review Board review, that they may require us to include those two developments in any ways.
If they do, do, do you have to then get those signatures, or is it not necessary?
And we do not need to get the signatures.
That's what I thought, okay, great.
Um, the reason for the other development, this Eighth Court, is to not split up the neighborhood. There are some policies in the county-wide planning policies as far as, you know, either the whole neighborhood needs to be in or not. And so rather than splitting the neighborhood, the decision was made to not include it in there.
Is there a chance they'll include that also, the whole neighborhood?
Quite possibly.
The whole neighborhood or just the little sliver?
It's quite possible that the Boundary Review Board could require us to take more property.
Thank you.
And the reason why we didn't take that one, uh, cul-de-sac that the county mentioned is, if you look at that, the boundary would go along that road, roadway, and that's where you'd split the two neighbor, the two p, or, split the neighborhood. And then by doing so, and then if you don't, if you move the boundary to the left, then you're falling a property line, which is an even more difficult description to, to describe. And if the Boundary Review Board does, um, look, want to add that, then they would hold a public hearing, give notice to all those property owners to have them opportunity to provide comment to the Boundary Review Board, and then they can make a decision to include that, uh, additional property or not.
Thank you. So, um, this is a, a public hearing, and I'm gonna open it up to the public, uh, to make comment on this, uh, the Stillcombe Marvin annexation. We have one person who signed up, uh, Chief Brooks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, Steve Brooks, Fire Chief for Lacey Fire District Three. Uh, just a brief comment to offer on behalf of, uh, the board, uh, for the Fire District and staff. Uh, our endorsement and, um, excitement, actually, that this is being considered for annexation, as was alluded to by staff. Uh, we are actively working on our capital facilities and equipment plan, which was overwhelmingly approved by our voters last year about this time. And our top priority, uh, of those facility projects is the new, uh, station on Stillcombe Road. As you're aware, we'll be retaining ownership and usage of the existing station. It'll be repurposed for training and storage, along with the vehicle repair facility that sits on that same property. That's a regional repair facility. And then we'll be constructing a new station on the property that fronts on Stillcombe Road, gives us better access and, uh, expanded capacity for staffing at that station, which is now, um, a rapidly growing service area for us. As you're aware, we're not impacted negatively in any way by the annexation of the city, because we're already the service provider in the area. Uh, we actually welcome the opportunity to work. We work often with law enforcement in that area, and so the approved response times for law enforcement is of benefit to us as well. It was mentioned that we are working through the land use process with the county. We did have our, uh, special use permit hearing on Tuesday of this week, which is the final step for that being approved. And we should receive, uh, we anticipate no problems with that, and it should be issued by the end of the month. So it's timely for us. We would welcome the opportunity to start the process then for permitting, which would be our next step with the city, rather than get underway with the county and then have to redirect that process, or there'd be some negotiated middle ground for that. So, uh, we're excited for this prospect and, and, uh, also believe it allows us to work with the city to make sure that our, uh, facility designs are in alignment with the city's long-term planning and, and growth. And, uh, again, we, we plan to occupy this long-term, and so we think it's a great partnership. Thank you for it, consideration.
We definitely look forward to you coming to the city, for sure. Is there any, anyone else from, uh, the public wishing to address this council on this annex, proposed annexation? Seeing none? Please, come up.
This is unexpected for me, but, um, I, I noticed that there's no indication on the map about what areas are actually in, already in the city around. That would be informative.
It's, it's up north. See the, the, yeah, the yellowish, that's the city boundary.
Okay, that's the city, the rest of it is county?
Is urban gra, uh, urban growth boundary.
Oh, oh, okay, gotcha. And the other question I had was that, are there any considerations for rezoning some of the residentially-zoned areas within that, uh, annexation area? Uh, either in conjunction with, uh, the annexation or, uh, afterwards?
Well, so, uh, the reason why this annexation was brought forward is because that trailer park that sits sort of in the, they requested it, 'cause they're looking to redevelop it, and they would like to redevelop it under the City of Lacey. And that's why this has really gone forward.
So, well, but it's, it's zoned now for residential, but there's some areas that are in the-
Everything else is, uh, there's Ostrom's and everything else is, uh, government property. Between Nesqually and the City of Lacey current property.
But there was, there, there was, I think you indicated that there were areas such as in here?
Yeah, that, that's-
Those, those areas are all part of the city-
That are residential?
The Phase Two, the Rack, and then the- You know, why, why is, why is that res, considered residential when it's the Rack?
So that was my question. Well-
Thank you.
Couple of things. Let me, um, the, well, first, that question is-
Isn't that, that county's responsible?
Is when that, um, when the, those land use annexations were established
Way back.
way, way in, or the early nineties, um, that property wasn't bought for the Rack at that point in time. And, uh, so when we've, did we, we did the, the, the actual playfields of the Rack as, uh, open space institutional. The county did not, uh, uh, re-designate those outlined parcels owned by the city now, 'cause they weren't owned by the city at that point in time, as, uh, open space institutional. So that's why you have the split zoning.
So do you think that will happen after-
That could be a possibility. It's not anticipated at the time or in conjunction with the annexation. But then, as we go into our compliance cycles going down in the future, then we'll take a look at some of those areas and see what are the appropriate zonings. The other piece is with the, uh, what's, as the, the mayor mentioned, what, what started this or initiated this annexation talk was the petition filed by the homeowner of the, uh, Rainier Vista Mobile Home Park. That, uh, is the piece that's to the north and east of the boundary. The, uh, the front half that faces Stillcombe is the Mobile Home Park portion. The north half, uh, butts to the city boundary is currently undeveloped, and that is the piece that they'd like to, uh, look at developing. And with that, that would extend whole street down to Stillcombe Road or, or continue the extension of the whole street. So they wouldn't redevelop the Mobile Home Park. That's not necessarily their plans at this point, but they developed the undeveloped portion of their property.
And I, I appreciate, um, the, the letter from, coming from the county. I think we'll have to, um, it'd be my, uh, opinion that we'll forward this on to the Boundary Review Board. And if, if they direct that to come into the city, then we'll follow suit. Um, but I think it's been, uh, given here why, um, we didn't include it in this original annexation, so I feel comfortable about going forward.
Mr. Mayor, oh, it's interesting about this letter, it's, it's not dated. That's unusual.
Yeah, I, it, I, I know they, I think they put this together today, so that's probably the reason why it's not dated.
I, I'm surprised they didn't see, see the Boundary Review Board, though, frankly. But, that normally would go there.
They, they would, uh, they would eventually, could, could eventually submit it to the Boundary Board. It's just not time for that, 'cause the Boundary Board's not aware of this. They haven't been filed yet. This is the first step before filing with the Boundary Review Board.
So, um, is there anyone else wishing to, to address this council? Go ahead.
Where's the local precinct for the police department? Quinault?
Well, that would have to be established. I mean, if we take that in, we would probably consider partnering with somebody in that area to keep us centrally located for the northeast and the south.
Great. Any other questions? Well, seeing none, then I'm going to close this public hearing on the Stillcombe Marvin Road annexation.
So we're also requesting a motion to send it to the Boundary Review Board.
And so, now that we're done with our public hearing, can I get a motion to forward this?
I would move to forward this annexation to the Boundary Review Board.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and we'll forward it on to the Boundary Review Board.
Thank you.
Thanks. So next up on our agenda is, uh, proclamations. And our first proclamation of this evening is the Small Business, Small Business Saturday proclamation.
City of Lacey official proclamation. Whereas the City of Lacey celebrates and supports our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and-
Whereas there are currently thirty point two million small businesses in the United States, which represents ninety-nine point seven percent of all businesses with employees in the United States, and-
Whereas small businesses employ over forty-seven point five percent of all businesses with employees in the United States and are responsible for sixty-five point nine percent of net new jobs created over the past twenty years, and-
Whereas small businesses contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue and are critical to the overall economic health of the United States, and-
Whereas it's important for people to support the small businesses that they value in their community, and-
Whereas advocacy groups and public and private organizations in our community and across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, as Small Business Saturday in the City of Lacey, and encourage citizens to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. So I myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this November fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. And thank you for this proclamation, and as a small business owner, I, I really appreciate it as well, and there's several small business owners here on this council.
And as a board member from the Lacey South Sound Chamber, also, um, you know, how much, we, you know, that we have several business owners on this council and how important it is to buy local.
Great. And now, uh, to our next proclamation is the Giving Tuesday proclamation.
City of Lacey official proclamation.
Whereas Giving Tuesday was established as a national day of giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving, and-
Whereas Giving Tuesday is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism, where people give whatever they are able to give, and-
Whereas Giving Tuesday-
Whereas Giving Tuesday is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favorable causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people, and-
Whereas it is fitting and proper on Giving Tuesday and on every day to recognize the tremendous impacts of philanthropy, uh, volunteerism, and community service in the City of Lacey, and-
Whereas Giving Tuesday is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout this holiday season and during other times of the year.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, to hereby proclaim Tuesday, November twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, as Giving Tuesday in the City of Lacey. Encourage all citizens to join together, to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful. So I myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on November fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Thank you much.
So now we're on to, uh, resolutions, and our first resolution is a property tax resolution. Back to Troy.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder, members of the council. Later on, on the agenda, you will hopefully be adopting the two thousand and nineteen property tax ordinance, which includes the, uh, statutory limit one percent increase. Um, because of that, there's an additional step that we need to take, according to state law, which says that, uh, we need to adopt an ordinance, a separate ordinance or resolution, that authorizes the increase both in terms of dollars and percentage. The resolution that's before you does exactly that. It authorizes the property tax increase of one percent, which in terms of dollars is equal to sixty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So it's requested that the city council adopt the resolution that will allow us to move forward with the two thousand and nineteen property tax ordinance. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Can I get a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution Number Ten Seventy-two relating to the twenty nineteen ad valorem tax increase.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Council Mayor?
So as I mentioned last time, um, I've been studying, uh, property taxes, and, uh, I did, uh, find this article, uh, by Bloomberg about, called Why Economists Love Property Taxes and You Don't. They're speaking to you being, uh, property owners. Um, and there's several interesting points in this, so I recommend the article, and I'm gonna give a copy here to Director Wu as he requested. Um, the, the downside that this article doesn't really address, um, is that, uh, the trickle-down impact does end up going towards renters. And so that's, that's a challenge. It's not spoken of in this article, but I just thought I'd bring that up.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none. It's been moved and seconded to adopt this ad valorem tax ordinance. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And next up, I'm gonna turn it over to our city manager to talk about our condo liability reform resolution.
So, Honorable Mayor and City Council, you may recall we've had an extensive discussion about affordable housing. One such issue, uh, was about condo liability reform. Um, I believe Council Mayor Greenside discussed this issue at one of our work sessions. This is something that Olympia Master Builders has brought forward as a, a piece to have a discussion about. Typically, what is seen, at least in the state of Washington, is that the issue of building defects and the potential for liability of building this product type has been a disincentive to either builders or for people to actually provide insurance for those builders building condos. And even locally, we've not seen that in Thurston County. It's a, a huge market for condos. Uh, so I think there was a general discussion about we should be taking some position, at least a discussion about trying to advance a discussion with the state legislature to at least address the Washington Condominium Act, and maybe there could be better reform to address some of the concerns from the, I'll say, building development community, but also maintaining consumer protection. So there's resolutions included with this pack. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we've had a discussion in the past about this.
I would move to approve the resolution supporting reforms to the Washington Condominium Act.
Second.
It's been moved in second to, um, adopt this resolution supporting the reforms to the Washington Condominium Act. Discussion?
Yeah, I just, um, you know, in looking at this, and it's something I deal with somewhat on a regular basis in my day job. But, you know, one of the crises that we've been talking about, and we've been calling it a crisis, is the affordable housing issue here locally and statewide, really. And this is just one area that, that hasn't been addressed. So condos just haven't been built. If you look, even in Seattle, there have been no, no new condos built, for the most part, over the last several years. And part of the reason is because of the condo liability laws. So, in order to address all levels of housing, and this is the reason that the building community has brought it forward, you know, one of the ways to address affordable housing is to have more options for housing. So typically condos run about seventy percent of the price of a house in the same area. This gives one other way for people to get housing that relieves some of the stress on the rental market and hopefully helps to make some housing more affordable. So, that's why I'm in support of this.
Council Mayor?
So one of the, um, um, I'm, I'm blanking out. What's the, what's the, when you're in a community and you get together and you, you share costs?
The co-op?
Lanny, you're part of a very big homeowners association. So, so, uh, a condo, a condo demands a homeowners' association on steroids. Uh, and so that's been one of the challenges, is you have liability, um, that everyone's pointing the finger at when it's, has to do with, you know, maintenance of a shared dwelling, shared, uh, building structure. So, that's one of the challenges. So if, uh, owners, uh, I would hope that in this pending legislation that, um, uh, they would, the state legislatures would lead, uh, Realtors to instruct buyers of condos of their high responsibility of participating in the government of their condo for their own safety, well-being, and property, um, uh, value maintenance.
Any other discussion?
I just have, I have a quick, quick comment. Normally, I'm, I'm not in favor of, uh, resolutions just to give a resolution. I, 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 um, you know, for example, the, the, the last part of this resolution says now therefore be resolved by the city council of the City of Lacey, that the city council sports balanced reform to the Washington Condominium Act that will encourage construction of affordable condominiums while maintaining consumer protections. Okay? That's pretty vague. Um, so, uh, but I, so I know there's work to be done here. You know, it does spell out in some of the other, whereas is, um, where to sort of, um, come up with better solutions when it comes to liability. And so that's, I think, something we can get across, but there's obviously some work to be done on this issue when we go through state legislature and- state legislature and I'm sure we'll find a balance between the construction of affordable condominiums while maintaining consumer protection. Not knowing what the specifics are, it's always difficult to figure out what that balance truly is because, you know, we don't want to have condominiums start being built in Lacey and then we have people in here five years later saying, hey, my condo's falling apart, what'd you guys do? So I know there's a balance. I think it's pretty clear the balance is off right now and so we need to get back to a better balance and so we can see more of these built in our community.
One really good bit of news on this is I think there's some really good people in our legislature on a bipartisan effort to move this forward. So there's some good people on both sides of the aisle who are really serious about this and who understand this issue and are very involved in it. So I think what you'll, we'll wind up seeing is something that looks like something we can support. And again, I agree with you in the fact that this is extremely vague, but it's hard to be any more specific when we, the legislative session hasn't even started yet, so we don't know what the bills will look like, but we'll certainly hear more.
Real quick, yeah?
As a general, I own business condominiums and condominiums in general and usually they're not my first choice, if you will, but this is still another tool in the toolbox and, you know, it, like I said, even if I don't agree with it personally one hundred percent, I still support it because it helps in the big picture.
Deputy Mayor?
So when I first read it, and even though the liability was very well explained by Councilmember Greenstein, I was a little nervous because I could see that it's supposed to fit at the next level to make things a little more affordable so that people can afford the areas where it takes its place, but I was a little concerned that like any kind of property type of thing, it would get more costly than, you know, it would move up to a single-family cost and end up not being that middle ground or that next level down. But I think, I think legislation, because it's not clear here, I think legislation can make sure that that doesn't happen maybe, so that's why I'm supporting it. Certainly the liability issue is significant.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to adopt this resolution supporting reforms to the Washington Condominium Act. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So next up is ordinances. First up is the property tax ordinance. Back to Troy.
Thank you again, Mayor Ryder. For your consideration tonight is the ordinance that will establish the two thousand nineteen property tax. By state law, we are required to establish that before the end of this month, this being the last meeting of the month. We're here before you. So there are three main factors that are impacting the property tax for two thousand nineteen, the first being the revenue levy, then you have your one percent revenue limit and then new construction. So the one percent statutory limit is either one percent or inflation, whichever is lower. The inflation rate that's used to establish this is two point one six nine percent, so we are above the one percent, so our legal limit is one percent, which you have authorized from previous action earlier this evening. What, one thing that's really helped the City of Lacey address some of its expenditure needs and demands on service has been new construction and that continues for two thousand nineteen. In fact, the new construction that we are adding is, definitely exceeds what we thought the projection would be for two thousand nineteen. So in two thousand nineteen, we're adding about a hundred and eighty-five million dollars of new construction. Our long-term projections, either depending on the year and what's happened in more recent years, it's either a hundred million or sixty-two, two and a half million dollars of new construction. So we've far exceeded that and that is exempt from the one percent limit. So we're allowed to grow property taxes without limitation in terms of new construction. So this one hundred and eighty-five million dollars of new construction is going to generate about two hundred and nine thousand dollars in new property tax next year. You know, to continue on with the valuation discussion, we are adding about six hundred and forty-two million dollars of assessed valuation. When you remove the new construction factor, that's about four hundred and fifty-six million dollars in new construction, or assessed valuation, which means property values are increasing in Lacey. So that is about an eight percent increase. This is the, I believe, fifth year of property appreciation within the City of Lacey, so, you know, another indication that the economy is moving in the right direction. So the ordinance for your considerations establishes and sets the general property tax levy at six million, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred dollars. Based on that assessed valuation, we are estimating that the levy rate will be right around a dollar six per thousand, so it's a decreasing levy rate. Total increase of about three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, again, about two hundred and nine thousand for new construction, sixty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars from the one percent, and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars from the refund levy. This ordinance also establishes the levy for the voter-approved geobond debt payments. So the total collections for debt payments for two thousand nineteen will be one million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Based on the assessed valuation, that's just under eighteen cents per thousand. That's also decreasing because of that increased assessed valuation. So it's requested that the city council adopt the ordinance and set the two thousand nineteen property tax levy.
So before we go forward, I want to talk to our city clerk. I think during the last resolution on the, this ad valorem, for setting the property tax, I read, I read, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the ad valorem tax ordinance. I was reading from this ordinance when we were on the resolution. Did you get that right?
I would have to go back and listen in the tape.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, I think that's my fault, there's a resolution that we had, now we're doing the ordinance and I, and I think I said it's been moved and seconded to adopt the ordinance and now we're on the ordinance and we were on the resolution before.
I know I moved it for the resolution.
I know it was moved and seconded originally properly, but when I repeated it, I think I repeated it as the ordinance. So do you have a suggestion there?
I would, I would just posit that, my recollection, I don't recall whether or not the mayor said ordinance or not, but the motion and the second were for the resolution. There was discussion on that.
I repeated it.
If the mayor said the word ordinance instead of the word resolution, that wouldn't invalidate the action.
Okay.
I think council as a whole understood and I think if you re-listen to the whole tape as a whole, the context would show that.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear because I'm looking at this, I'm like, man, I just, I just, anyway. So can I get, yeah, clerical, so can I get a motion to adopt this ad valorem tax ordinance?
I move that we adopt the ad valorem tax ordinance, ordinance number fifteen thirty-six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Why you jump in there, councilmember? Jason?
So in case it went over everybody's head, anybody's head, our overall assessed value for Lacey is increasing about a half a billion dollars. That's huge. So that's a good news for our economy. Is it true, Troy, that Lacey's assets are also assessed and we pay taxes accordingly or not?
No, public properties are exempt from property tax. I'm not sure that there's an assessed valuation assigned.
Okay.
I've never really looked at it because we don't generate tax revenue off of that, but taxes exempt.
Thank you.
Interesting. So is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to adopt this ad valorem tax ordinance, ordinance number fifteen thirty-six. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So next up on our agenda is the mayor's report and I have one item. Don Melnick, who has served this council on almost every board and commission out there, has been expressed interest to be on the Thurston County Media Board and we actually have already, Steve and I have already met with him to talk about some of the issues that we see going forward with TC Media and how he could best represent. He would like to have been here tonight, but he's on his board of his church and he has a board meeting night, so he couldn't make it.
You need an option.
So I would move that we do appoint Don Melnick to the TC Media Board.
Second.
Thank you for that. We did open this up to the full city. I, he immediately expressed interest and I said, you know, Don, you're great, done it all, let's just see if, you know, maybe someone else is interested in serving, and we left it open for like a month and no one was interested, so I passed along to Don. Yeah.
Yeah, I would just say, I've served with Don on the planning commission. He's an incredible asset to this community. Don is, I mean, he loves Lacey, he does a ton of work for us and pretty much anything he's asked to do, he'll do, so.
He's great.
Fully support this.
Councilmember? As you know, Don serves on the intercity transit board as a citizen, so I don't know where he finds the time, but I really...
He sat on the port.
It's on the port, yeah.
Our planning commission, all over the place.
So I really appreciate the second on that. It's been moved and seconded. We had some discussion. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries and we'll let him know. Thank you. City manager report.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, we have an interlocal agreement before you, which is the lot conservation program interlocal agreement. Scott Agar, Public Works Director, will provide that information.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Staff recommends authorizing the city manager to enter into an ILA between Lacey Lot and other lot partners for wastewater flow reduction and water conservation. This is the third in a series of ILAs beginning back in two thousand and seven. So all the partners, we support things like rebates for toilets and washing machines, giveaways that helps reduce flow to wastewater such as, you know, showerheads and, you know, different faucet heads. The program has been extremely successful. To date, the reduction is somewhere around one point two million gallons per day, you know, it's been achieved through this program since two thousand and seven and that's almost ten percent of the overall flow. It is less expensive to support and subsidize reduction than it is to build new capacity to lot. It also helps us with our water conservation program because all wastewater starts as clean water, so whatever's, you know, going down your shower, your toilet, your sink, your dishwasher. So anyway, this is an ILA that would run from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-four with a goal during, at the end of this period of increasing the amount of the reduction by another a hundred and twenty thousand gallons per day. In each of these three ILAs, the amount has stepped down. The initial ILA, the goal was five hundred and thirty thousand gallons per day, then it stepped down to a hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons per day, now down to a hundred and twenty. And the reason being, you know, when you start the program, you have much more opportunity, there's a lot more low-hanging fruit, so it's, you know, it's harder and harder to, you know, we're tapping into, we've been very successful, so we're tapping into all the areas that we've been able to reduce. So it's, anyway, it's a very worthwhile program and staff recommends authorization.
I'd move to authorize the city manager execute the interlocal agreement between lot, the City of Lacey, City of Olympia, City of Tumwater, and Thurston County for wastewater flow reduction and water conservation projects.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded and is there any discussion?
I just want to say one thing, being on the lot board and stuff, this is an excellent program, lot benefits as well, and it's just amazing how much they can, you can do by just adding certain kinds of, you know, rebates and stuff, so, and I've actually taken advantage of it too, so it's been great.
Councilmember?
Being that utilities is almost half the number, thanks for all you can do in reducing the water usage because it's not, here, it's not, it's about the water, but it's not really about the water, it's about the expensive facilities to process that water, so there's probably a big number there that we're saving our citizens. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to execute this interlocal agreement. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
I have some great news for council to report. We have now exercised our interlocal agreement that you passed two months ago, so as per the ordinance, if an interlocal agreement is twenty-five thousand or less or does not include significant language, I can report that out to city council.
Are you reporting now?
No, drum roll please. So, so we, or I, I signed a Washington State Patrol with the City of Lacey and Washington State Patrol to utilize State Patrol Academy facilities. This is for EVOC training, that stands for Emergency Operator Vehicle Course Training. This is a, we basically, our officers go use the track and train maneuvers with obviously police cars. So we actually rent the track from Washington State Patrol. That term will last from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-four. We typically spend about two thousand dollars on an annual basis for renting of that track. So that was one. The other, or the second interlocal agreement was with Thurston County. We utilize Thurston County to repair or even replace police car radios. We don't do that in-house. That's typically costs about five thousand dollars on an annual basis. It's a one-year term. So those are the two interlocal agreements I've signed.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for that information. Now we'll go up to standing general committees. First up is the Finance Committee, which met on October twenty-third. There was three items that we discussed. We've already talked about the ad valorem tax ordinance and authorizing for the tax resolution. We just did both those today. I think we've, I've reported out, maybe not, on the third quarter two thousand and eighteen investment report budget, maybe, I feel like I have.
I do, too.
So I think I've, it's, all of those have been reported out, so that's my report. I'll turn it over to the general government.
So general government, public safety, met October twenty-third as well. We covered the FCC small cell, not older, order, and it was presented on, about small wireless communication facilities commonly referred to as 5G technology. And currently, no jurisdiction in Thurston County has adopted regulations specifically addressing small cell infrastructure. So staff and the planning commission is studying the issue and is preparing for future municipal code updates regarding small cell facilities, including location on public property, aesthetics, and permit processing. On October twenty-second, the day before, the FCC issued a declaratory ruling and order on wireless and wireline facilities that will limit local regulation of these matters, which is of major concern. So the City of Lacey is joining a number of other cities and counties and filing an appeal of the FCC ruling in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. And other counties and cities are looking at joining it as well. One of the attorneys that we are currently using for Comcast cable franchise negotiations is one of the ones that is helping prepare the appeal process and it will be approximately one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. And the fees may potentially increase contingent upon the outcome of the appeal. So Mayor Ryder was to contact the National League of Cities and I was to contact Association of Washington Cities because we're both on those boards to gauge interests by those organizations. And I know I reached out as well and I assume you did too.
I did. I can report on that.
So then the last thing was actually lots of fun. We got to visit, completed park projects and we finished, visited two finished park projects, the Woodland Creek Community Park Trail Connection and the Regional Athletic Complex Bleacher Cover Project. So it was fun to get out and see what we do. That's my report.
Yeah, just, so just report back on the small cell. This is something that a lot of communities are facing, not only here in Lacey but across the United States and like the deputy mayor said, she was gonna report that out to AWC. We talked about this at the National League of Cities and we actually just adopted a resolution, as you know, in support of local jurisdictions controlling this small cell technology instead of having a one-size-fits-all to go across the... instead of having a one size fits all to go across the nation, which is what's being pushed right now by, of course, the telecommunications companies, which have a big lobby and spend a lot of money. And um, and there's quite a bit of concern actually that their sorbing get free rein to do what they want when it comes to this. Um, so uh, the NLC has passed a resolution, which now authorizes their lobbyists to um lobby on behalf of our cities so we can have some control over standards and everything else that we've talked about that affects our cities. Instead they can, instead of them just letting, slap it on one of our our poles and our right away, which is what they kinda wanna do now.
Well, and plus, um, the, there's a couple issues. One is that we have no con- well, more than that, no control, but also um aesthetically, they can be just really ugly. And then the other thing is safety and I think that's a bigger concern. And so um, yeah, we need to be very um assertive when we follow through and and appeal this, I think. And I think the Association of Washington Cities is picking this up too. I haven't heard back after I presented it, but I think they're going to.
I appreciate that. Now we're onto Boards, Commissions and Community Reports. I'm up first. Uh, the Transportation Policy Board met yesterday morning, right in early seven AM on November fourteenth. Uh, we actually had a a pretty lively discussion at the Transportation Policy Board. As you know, a lot of the things that we discuss, uh, sort of just uh as a report staff, you know, staff reports out and uh, we have some discussion and it's a unanimous decision. The the item that was brought before us that we had a lot of conversation about was uh funding that was given to the city of Tomwater, um, really way back in two thousand and six. So uh, federal funds, STP funds were granted back in two thousand and six. They obligated those funds in two thousand and nine, so they spent, actually spent that funds. What that does, when you, when you spend federal funding, uh, s- s- funds is it, it federalizes the entire project. And at the time, they uh were looking at entire trail corridor, the the Shoots Valley Trail. And it, what that, by spending uh three hundred and eight thousand dollars on that port, with that portion to start that, it started a a time clock. So now they have ten years to basically finish that project. And that ten years is gonna be up next year. And so they were um facing this problem where they weren't getting complete the trail in time. And so they've actually had to give, they gave back the, the, they wrote check back to the federal government for the three hundred and eight thousand dollars that they they spent um because uh they've, they're not gonna meet the timeline and they're gonna have to do that anyway. Um, what, so the request was is uh for uh the Transportation Policy Board to make a request that the full board reprogram that three hundred and eight thousand dollars that they gave back so they could ta- get that money back and go back towards the trail to go forward. Um, and uh, the the cost of the overall trails uh gonna be about thirteen million dollars, which is a lot of money. And we had some, some members from South County sort of uh feel like uh we pro- we shouldn't reprogram that that money back to Tomwater, that it's been too long, they didn't meet their obligation. And um, there's, they, that opinion that they should spe- we should be spending that money on other projects. And so uh, we had a long conversation. We, we did, uh, the majority of the council did agree to uh reprogram the three hundred and eight thousand dollars. But it was, it was a lively discussion, uh, to say the least. And I think that the takeaway from this, and I think we've gotten a lot better as a region, is to really be careful of when, just because federal funds is available, as you have to be careful when to use it and what to use it on. Now, since then, that that, the rules have changed. Now, now we're under a use it or lose it policy where we're not, we're not giving them that long to go forward. Or it's, we're basically saying you have to obligate the money and you have to go forward that project right away. And we've done a lot better as a region. Um, back then, it was like if federal funds were available, you grab it and worry about the consequences later. And so um, anyway, it was a really interesting uh conversation. Now they, uh, the the city of Tomwater has, they passed their their prop one, their their parks. And they have new money coming in that will allow them to complete this trail and go forward, so.
How long till, in the past, it was ten years. So how long do they have now that the money's been reprogrammed?
It still starts that ten-year process, but you know, um, that that money was re- originally granted them in two thousand and six. And so they didn't even spend the money till two thousand and nine. Now, if you obligate it, um, i- if you, they received the money in two thousand and six and they have to obligate it that next year. They can't, they can't wait. So it starts the process a lot faster.
So the ten years pretty much starts now?
Starts.
And they have to finish the project in the ten years?
You have to, you have to obligate that, that very next year. And so now what we're seeing, we've, we've gotten a lot more selective. But what they found is, is huh, they've de-federalized this whole trail now and it's gonna save them way more than three hundred and six thousand dollars 'cause when you federalize their, a, a project, there are s- it's so much more expensive when you have federal money involved in it. 'Cause now you're doing uh NEPA and see, you're doing the, all these other things. And so they, they realized by giving the three hundred and eight dollars back, um, they, they're gonna save way more than that on this project. Which is kinda scary. So that, that was the conversation. The, the other item, um, every four years, we uh have to update our Human Services Transportation Plan and come up with a priority project list. Uh, we, we did that again and we were gonna forward it on to full council. Uh, we had an update, uh, the I five update from, it's been ongoing from Marysville all the way through Thurston County. Uh, our, the, the executive director of TRPC has been on that, on that I five study group and he's re- sort of reported out where they're at on that. Uh, we feel much better of where we're at this year than we were last year. I think our, our relationship with Wash thought, I think we're on the same page now. And last year, we, we weren't quite on the same page. And so uh, that led into our, our two thousand and nineteen legislative session priorities, which is of course a, a four point five million dollar ask to the state legislature as part of that for this, continue to do the, the environmental review uh for the section from the Squally, through the Squally um area. Uh, actually, all the, all the way through this new section from uh, from Mounts Road South. And so um, we talked about some of those priorities. Uh, the other thing that we, we had talked about, and I think it's uh something that we're gonna come back and maybe make it a priority of the Thurston Regional Plan Council, is that uh, I know the deputy mayor was, was there with me where uh the, the Ruckel House was um, is a, is a think tank and they're, they're often used when the state has a sort of a controversial problem that they want a bipartisan solution and answers to. They, they contract with the, the Ruckel House. The, the, the state legislature has um, has hired the Ruckel House or uh, uh, use the Ruckel House to look at the Growth Management Act. Uh, you know, it's been, geez, twenty-eight years or something like that since the um, since the GMA was enforced. It hasn't really been looked at on um, sort of the vision of the GMA to the reality of what's actually happened. Um, so they've been work, setting up workshops all across Washington State to meet with local electeds and all the different partners on issues relating to the Growth Management Act. What's been working, what's not working? What do we need to work on for it to be successful going forward? And so uh, we had a, a workshop um that was put on at the Thurston Regional Plan Council. I, I attended, the deputy mayor attended, a lot of the, some, several other elected officials, uh, county commissioner, other c- council members, uh, the, or some legislative members were there as well. And we all sort of talked about what we believe was working and what isn't working. Um, I had talked about uh one of the issues that we've discussed here on this council when it comes to islands, when in our, when in um, the cities, within our UGA. And I um, I requested that Thurston Regional Plan Council sort of look at that um issue and uh, discuss it a little bit further. We have, we're gonna have a subcommittee sort of uh include the county and other uh people who, other city officials who, who are looking at this issue to see if we can come up with some sort of compromise where we can move this forward um, and have some sort of uh agreement of what we need to do to move this forward um, and maybe include it in our legislative priorities going forward. So that is my report. Deputy Mayor.
Okay, so Lot, um, Clean Water Alliance met yesterday, November fourteenth, and um, we did a number of things at a work session and then we had our business meeting. Uh, at a work session, we reviewed the final draft of our two thousand and nineteen, twenty twenty-four strategic plan. Uh, we had a report on uh what is being called Public Health Emergency Support Program and that um, that basically is handling um uh impacts to the um Bud Inlet Tra- Treatment Plant um, and the homeless uh tents that are very next, uh, right there, uh, next to it. Um, we put up a fence all the way around um outside the um shrubbery and actually that cut the um impacts that we've had literally down to zero. So that is excellent. Uh, so they didn't find um needles, waste, whatever, so that was great. Um, we are, we also, um, for this uh budget year, we uh will provide the money for Olympia to buy um a shower toilet facility uh for seventy-one thousand about uh to use in their permanent tent sh- shelter program near Plum Street. And Lot will waive the connection fee. And this uh will totally be maintained by Olympia. We're just providing the money. And if Lacey or Tomwater need a, a toilet, a shower toilet facility uh in the future for um the same types of uh providing homeless shelters, um, we, we're going to um put another one hundred and fifty thousand in the coming uh draft budget for that purpose. And I'm saying draft 'cause we haven't um passed it at this time, um, at the work session. Um, we gave the go-ahead for updating the procurement policy since it was based on Tomwater being under twenty thousand uh population and they are now above that. And so there are different state procurement procedures, uh, which actually makes procurement much easier now, so. Um, and the policy will be brought back to the board next month for approval or disapproval. Um, we were invited to participate in the Capital Lake EIS process since Lot uh because of our MPDES permit. Is indirectly involved in what happens in the decision-making with Capital Lake. And um, because ecology has oversight and even though we have this much impact, it makes a difference about our permit. So um, because I am president of Lot for this term, um, I was actually appointed as the representative for the Executive Work Group and there will also be a technical work group and a funding and governance group. So three groups. The executive director, um, though I might add that Lacey too is indirectly um impacted because ratepayers, if we have to, um, if the rates go up high enough in order to deal with um the Capital Lake issue, our ratepayers will be significantly impacted. Um, the executive director went over what is being shared by uh partners around uh the Bud Inlet Treatment Plant, such as uh the Food Bank, et cetera, as our construction plans um are going to start um happening. And this includes Franklin Streets and the A and B Streets possibly. At our business meeting, we approved the two thousand and nineteen, twenty twenty budget and capital improvements plan. Um, and so we added that uh previous one hundred and fifty thousand um that we had talked about doing. Um, that was added as a, an amendment to it. We presented uh an employee with his thirty-fifth year service award. That was pretty spectacular. And then we had two performance reports. Uh, Justin Long talked about who is in his finance department, what they do and what has occurred this year. And then Lisa Den- uh Dennis Perez gave a presentation on her environmental planning and communications department, what they do, who they are and their accomplishments for this year. And one of the things she brought up was the um uh reclaimed water um project and what, it's going to start ramping up next year uh again because uh they're now into doing more analysis of, from what they've done. Um, so the Olympic Region Clean Air Agency, or ORCA, met also Wednesday, uh, November fourteenth, and we had a presentation on the gas station rule, which is going through rulemaking. Whoops. We heard presentations on two draft penalty work sho- uh sheets. One, the asbestos, um, and then the second demolition penalty worksheets. Abestis, the asbestos worksheet was last updated in two thousand and eleven and the demolition slash renovation civil penalty worksheet hasn't been updated since two thousand and ten, so, I mean, twenty, um, two thousand and eight. So mainly the updates were for clarification and making sure it agreed with current rules. However, the demolition renovation worksheet penalty has expanded to have a maximum penalty of ten thousand dollars to bring it in line with other maximum penalties. Um, we then looked at costs plus FTEs over ten years. Uh, the board had requested that in reference to their budget. And basically, it shows that while co- costs, because of benefits of, staff benefits have increased, staffing has been fairly flat. Uh, so this kind of helped us look at the budget in relation to that. Um, we took action on proposed changes to Rule one point eleven. I brought this up last year. Basically, this is a yearly action to change the date of the rule to bring it into line with ecologies and EPA's air quality rules that are current. Uh, we passed a motion for our Small Public Works Roster Resolution uh that we had with Thurston County. Um, this time, we moved it to contract directly with MRSC, who puts out the small works ro- uh roster. And uh, let's see, we hired one new compliance person, but still are down one vacancy, uh, which is currently out for uh filling that position. And then Lacey's air quality for October had twenty-nine good days and three days that were in the moderate range. And our ozone monitoring showed that we didn't exceed thirty-five parts per billion. Um, the maximum amount that is acceptable is seventy parts per billion, so we're, that was really great. Um, and then um, the Woodstove Change Out Project is still going on if residents are still interested. And uh, there will be no December meeting, so yay. And that's my um, report.
Thank you. Councilor Young.
Um, so I'm only going to report on EDC. And um, the EDC hosted an official delegation from Man Yang, China. And in during this meeting, um, there was a memorandum of economic development agreement that was signed. And that's not a fiscally binding agreement, but it outlines the framework of working together. And then um, later on in our meeting, the EDC staff basically let the board know that they have created an online platform to recruit opportunity zone funds with local economic development projects. They've even taken the time to trademark that online platform and they'll be working to develop the program with in other um EDCs in the state and with the Washington State Department of Commerce. And then the um, EDC staff reported that all of their programs are on target to meet their annual goals. So that's good. And then um, just to let everyone know, the Regional Innovation Expo will be on Thursday, December sixth at um, the Little Creek Conference Center. And that's my report.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Greenstein.
I have no report at this time.
Councilor Hearn.
So Thurston County Coalition Against Trafficking met last week and uh, the main points of discussion were uh the Community Conversations Event, uh, which was a huge success last year, uh, filling the um Education Thirteen Building in Tomwater last year. Last year's focus uh was a, a public, community-wide and uh, and was very successful. This year, uh, we're going to focus more on key contacts uh, uh, in law enforcement, uh, medical, education, electeds, et cetera, uh, to participate in a um, uh, a, a, another conversation, but one that uh has more, um, more production because of the key contacts involvement. Uh, we also discussed the uh annual five K Race Against Trafficking. Uh, this is just a two, two or three month uh. This is just a two, two or three-month period where we aren't working that. It's the main fundraiser, and we're starting to develop a list of our key sponsors from last year, and also new key sponsors for next year. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report.
Councilmember Cox.
Well, I'll make up for Councilmember Stedman. Okay. The Community Action Council's October meeting was pretty much routine business, but there was one notable item, that was a report on the impacts on the weatherization program by the state's determination that projects that utilize state and federal dollars must pay prevailing wage. And it's, it's essentially, as I understand it, an example of unintended consequences in the state's efforts to support labor unions. But the prevailing wage is like two to five times higher than the wages that are normally paid for common trades. In this case, they would be like insulation installers. So, the dark side of this is that at least 20% to 25% reduction in the number of homes that the weatherization program is going to be able to service. And there are efforts being made to work with the legislature to see if there is a way to either exempt this program or find a workaround, because, I mean, nobody wants to, you know, say no to unions and family wage jobs. But on the other hand, this is a very real need, and it's going unmet. And we're actually going to have to probably walk away from some federal money, because we can't make things line up. So, stay tuned. I hope this will improve. Intercity Transit met last week and conducted a public hearing on the 2019 draft budget. And if, if it's finally adopted, the budget will be $130,515,025. I should say, they broke out the noise makers, and there was a lot of celebration, because Intercity Transit's ballot measure was approved by 65%. So, a lot of fun at that meeting as well. We also approved the Intercity Transit Short and Long Rage Plan, and this provides the framework for technical review of the current fixed route services, as well as a roadmap for future service enhancements. And this is based on this two-year public interaction that they've been doing called IT Road Trip. And it provides future capital needs and considers constraints to reliance on future federal funding levels, which tend to be a little, little shaky. And finally, we declared a number of van pool and dial lift vehicles and facilities and maintenance items as surplus at a total value of $188,765. And the reason for bringing that one up is that Intercity Transit makes surplus vans available to social service agencies that use them for transporting people. And so, there will be a number of vehicles available. Thurston Regional Planning Council meets December 1st. And then, finally, a report on the Ad-Hoc Committee on Homelessness and Affordable Housing. We met on November 8th, and we're very fortunate to have Colin DeForest, who is Olympia's homeless coordinator, talk with us about the on-the-ground emergency response efforts Olympia is doing to the housing crisis. You probably are aware that they're moving forward with the Tiny House Village near the old city hall on Plum Street, and plans are going forward on that. In addition, they plan to clean up tent encampments on vacant lots on State Street. The population has grown from about 30 tents in August to well over 300 tents now. And so, what the city plans to do is literally move the tents over on an adjoining lot temporarily, and then go in, clean up the current property, install hygiene and sanitation facilities, and then the camp will move back onto the improved property. They'll also have supervision, as police patrols and other supervision, and this area will be fenced in. So, it's, it's an effort, I mean, it's not perfect, but it's an effort to try to contain this the best they can and to provide support and health, public health considerations, as well as security for the safety of everybody. We shared some of the work that Lacey is doing with Colin and discussed ways in which Lacey and Olympia can work together on this. And his short answer was, well, Lacey might consider replicating some of what Olympia's doing on a, on a smaller scale. And I think we just have to have more conversations about that, because our situation doesn't look like what Olympia's situation does, but that doesn't mean there's not a problem. So, I think we'll have to find our own answers, but keep the communication flowing with them. And that's my report.
Thank you. Well, we've reached the end of our agenda. Thank you for another good meeting. And we will not have a meeting next Thursday, because we'll be off for Thanksgiving. And so, then we have the 5th Thursday, so our, our next meeting will be on December 6th. So, I wish everyone out there a happy Thanksgiving and be safe. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacey, and I'll call this meeting adjourned.